Well, well, well. Welcome, welcome, welcome. It's Monday Night Conversations with Brother Steve from Hollywood, California. And you know what? It's gonna be a great night. It's a triple header tonight. Triple header tonight. I'm gonna be sitting here in front of y'all for the next three hours. It's alright, cuz we do what we gotta do to support and endorse and be a blessing to the wonderful candidates. You can call me up toll-free, one eight 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 nine nine eight gospel. That's one eight 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 nine nine eight gospel. Tonight, we wanna be a blessing to about two, three people tonight. But during this broadcast, I need you to do me a favor. I need, first of all, I need, I need five people to share this video. Five. I need five people to share this video right now. I need five people to share. Okay, I need four people. I need four people who will share this video with your groups, your friends, everybody. It's early. I know it's early on the West Coast. It's early in the afternoon, but it's after dinnertime on the East Coast, so we got it right in the middle. Everybody, I need three people to share this video, so we can get the word out. Dr. Carla Galbraith herself is with us tonight. You gonna see Dr. Carla. You gonna see Dr. Carla, but guess what? She got two very special guests that's gonna be with us on tonight as well. People are texting me. They're calling my, they're texting my phone already, okay? I need three people to share this video. Let's get the word out. They got Dr. Carla. She is a candidate for reelection. Understand that she's already on the trustee board, but she's going for reelection for the trustee board. And we're gonna talk to her tonight and get some of the things that's on her mind and her heart, but she has a very, very true, super surprise special guest. From Hollywood, let's kick it off. Let's talk about it.
From Hollywood.
Yo DJ.
Are you done mixing yet?
Your DJ has only just begun.
Hello, I'm Bishop TD Jakes, and you're watching Brother Steve TV.
Hey, it's Latoya Luckin', and you're watching Brother Steve TV.
This is Ranz Allen, and you're watching my friend, Brother Steve TV.
Hey, y'all. This is Andrew Johnson, and you're watching Brother Steve TV.
Hi, this is Robby Goff, Charles Jerking.
This is Chris Tucker.
This is Kirk Franklin.
And you are watching Brother Steve TV.
You watch Brother Steve.
Brother Steve TV.
From Hollywood, California, you're watching Brother Steve TV.
I know you like that bump. I know, I can feel, I can see. I know you like that bump. That bump is off the chain. I know you like that bump. You know, there are so many people in the Church of God in Christ who have been influential in my personal world and in my life and just influential period. We have the former and first, first, first female CFO of the Church of God in Christ. See, most of y'all didn't know that we had a female CFO of the Church of God in Christ. That's right, a female. See, y'all thinking bishops also, and she ain't a bishop. No. She handling them chips. Asked me how I knew, because I said, I gotta invoice it. Well, no, no, this how this go happen. Okay, 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 fine. I'll give you receipts. She knows, one thing about her, she know how to handle that money. She's also the current executive director of Cojic Charities, one of the longest-serving members of the National Trustee Board. She's countless community organizations. She's well-known in her community. She has expertise on accounting, managing money. If you give her $10 and you say, budget this out, she'll say, okay, and then she'll come back to you and say, this is, okay, no problem. And then you're like, oh, can I get that seven or that 10? But is she gonna come back? She said, no, I can't do that. I said, why not? Why can't you? I just gave you 10, no. She said, that's not in the budget. How can it not be? I just gave you the whole budget. She said, no, because the budget now changed to $5. And I got everybody donate $20 worth of stuff. That's how she gets us done. That's the magic. Oh, Dr. Mother Sylvia Law, Mother Law, how you doing?
I'm just wonderful. Thank you, Brother Steve.
Good to see you. So good to see you. And I want to say, is it appropriate, I can say, happy retirement to you?
Yes, I'm retiring.
Gosh, happy retire. How many years have you been on the trustee board?
Oh, gosh, I, I think it was 2000 that I joined the trustee board. I came on the trustee board right after I resigned as being the chief financial officer of the church. And then the next election, I came on, I went on to the National Board of Trustees. But I'm retiring from the Board of Trustees, but I, I can't, I'm not tired yet. I'm gonna find my hands to do something.
The National Board of, that's almost 24 years.
Yes, yes.
It did so, so well. Tell me, one of the, what, what, what is one of the things that you would say is your, your, your thing that you're the most proud of? That you are gonna leave behind in your legacy?
Well, with regards to the trustee board, the same, the same format that is being used today. I designed and developed that as the chief financial officer. And the process that they're using today is the same process with a few, with just a few tweaks. But the concept and the process is pretty much the same, that we interview the departments. And we have the same forms that are being used today are the forms that I designed back in, well, gee, I guess back in the 60s, 70s era.
Wow, unbelievable. You know what's wonderful? And I can't give out too much information, cuz I don't wanna get in trouble by the boss lady. But we're, we're gonna be honoring you sometime this month, in the month of May. I can't give out exact details, the exact location. But I just wanna say congratulations. I'm looking forward to being at that celebration. And myself and my wife, my daughter, and I'm gonna have another surprise for you that's gonna come to that celebration, celebrating your legacy in the Church of God in Christ.
Thank you so much. We go so far. We go way back, Brother Steve, man. I, I really respect you, hardly appreciate you. And excited to see your daughter and your wife. I watch you on Facebook, and boy, the little girl has just grown up. She's quite a young lady.
She, she, she done grew up on me. She growing up quick. She ain't stopping. So one thing about that, she ain't stopping. The diapers ain't stopping. The poop ain't stopping. So we, all that's happening. Before we talk about our wonderful lady, Dr. Carla, I wanna have you both talk about her, and then we're gonna let Mother Law know you have something else you have to do on this evening. But one of the sons of the late, great Bishop George Dallas McKinney and the late Mother Jean McKinney, both have PhDs. And the pastor of St. Stephen's Church of God in Christ in San Diego, California. Currently, he's the deputy, can you believe that? He's the deputy adjutant general for the Church of God in Christ, a graduate of Morehouse College, Morehouse College, and an accomplished guitarist. Pastor Glenn McKinney, how you doing, Doc?
Man, it's good to see you, brother. I'm doing well.
I didn't know you were an accomplished guitarist.
Yeah, man, I, I used to, that was my profession for years after I got out of college. I did that for at least 12 years straight. Was working in the industry pretty strong, and until the Lord called me and snatched me out.
Now, you on that guitar. Matter of fact, right now, if you are a member of Pastor Stevens Church, if you are a member of Dr. Carl Pierce's church in Maryland, Mother Law's friends and family. And I'm gonna open the comments right now. You can leave some comments. We can open the comments up if you wanna say hello to Dr. Carla before she comes on. Oh, the number one person is getting ready to make a comment right now, and she did, and that's my mother. My mother, Lady Ora, she just said, what time you going on? My mother is out there watching the broadcast right now, and I want to say, all the Cojic Greeks, all the Cojic Greeks out there that's watching our broadcast, I'm calling you out, okay? Phi Beta Sigma Brother Steve is calling you out right now. All the Cojic Greeks, I'm calling them out right now, okay? We are, oh my Lord. There's my buddy.
That's my friend.
Pretending Melton Timmons is watching, and I will say, you know, you know, you know what? I'm gonna say that. I'm sorry, guys. The show just changed. He literally is everybody's friend. This man is everybody's friend, and we just, you know, love what he does. And he's also gonna be on our show soon, as he is also a candidate for reelection to the trustee board. The Saints are friends are coming on right now, but we want, I'm gonna ask Mother Law to say a couple of words about Dr. Carla. And then I'm gonna ask Pastor Glenn to say a couple of words about Dr. Carla, and then we're gonna bring her on. How about?
Yes. Well, thank you, Brother Steve. I'm so happy to have this opportunity to be a part of your show. I'm, I'm just so godly proud of you and what you've accomplished throughout the years. And I'm also proud of, of Dr. Carla Galbraith. This is a young lady that decided that she wanted to make a contribution to the national church, and she's decided to run for the National Trustee Board. And now she's running for reelection to that same board. And I was so impressed with her as a member of the trustee board, her knowledge, her expertise, her willingness to work with others and her cooperation. And, and the contributions that she had made to the board and to the, the role that the board has as relates to fulfilling the constitutional mandate that has been given to the National Board of Trustees. She is, she is so knowledgeable. She has her PhD. She's worked in higher education for many of years in administrative positions. And she's had responsibility for developing and implementing budgets through her, through her career as an educator. So it was just a natural thing for her to come on to the National Board of Trustees and trustees and provide her knowledge and expertise to the national church. I'm so godly proud of her. She makes all of us proud.
Pastor McKinney, what words you'd like to share about Dr. Carla?
Well, being a part of the Church of God in Christ offers so many benefits. One of the benefits is that you meet really great people. And when you grow up with these people, sometimes as a kid, and you're, you know, playing with your friends and you're, you know, playing with people and, and you're, you know, having these relationships as a kid. You don't know what these people will become one day. You don't really think about it. But it's so good to see someone who you've seen over the years, who, who's just allowed God to use her, even through the challenges of life, has really stepped up. And she's been a pillar example of what a godly woman is. Not only that, there's a special bond that I have with her, because I'm one day older than her. I'm born on October 20th, 1969, and she's born on October 21st, 1969. So I call her my twin. So we, we have so much in common, but the seriousness, the expertise, and Mother Law said, said it all. She brings so much to the table, and it just gives us a breath of fresh air when people are elected or put in position, and they really have something to say. They really have something to contribute. And Sister Carla has a lot to contribute with her experience in education. She just brings so much to the table. She, she's a wealth of knowledge. And not only that, she's a fun person.
Yeah.
And I tell, I tell her all the time, if, if this education thing doesn't work out, you can probably, you know, have a career in comedy. Because she's one of the funniest young ladies I know. And I just love her as a sister, and I'm just so godly proud of what she has allowed God to use her to do in this church, this beautiful church of God in Christ.
Well, let's bring on the one and only Dr. Carla Galbraith, so she can say some words to you all before you all step off. Dr. Carla, oh my gosh, what an introduction there. Look at you, look at you. How you doing?
I'm doing great. It's early out here, you know, we're getting that work in California, so.
It's still out up here, Mother Law. She got a little, she got a little sun setting in the background. You know, but, you know, Carla, you just, you're just ready for TV all the time. It's like, ready for TV. What, what, what do you wanna share with Mother Law and Pastor Glenn before they step off camera? We're gonna go right into this wonderful time of sharing.
These are two of my dearest friends. Mother Law is like another mom to me. When I'm on the treadmill in the morning, at five in the morning, I call Mother Law. Everybody else calls their girlfriends. I'm calling Mother Law, and we talk about just about everything. And then I call my mom. I just love Mother Law as a mentor, tutelage. She is just guiding me, and that's the best kinda leader you need, someone that's done the job and knows what they're doing, and I can call her friends. So I called her tonight, and Glenn, my God, that is my brother, my twin. He's so, he's so humble, but Glenn is, Pastor Glenn is so intelligent, highly intelligent. He's a chip off the old block, and again, I can call him anytime for just sound advice. When we get through clowning around like kids in UNAC.
Oh, she went back with that one.
I was Miss UNAC. Don't do that. If Keita is on, don't worry about Miss UNAC 1990. But, you know, Pastor McKinney and the whole McKinney family, family has been near and dear to me. What you don't know is as a young girl, I admired his late mother, Mother Jean McKinney, as a woman that had a PhD and had five boys. I was like, I wanna be like that, not the five boys part. But I did go on to have three boys. I admired them, and as young women, yes, young teenagers, we wanted to look at our leaders, and now we have another set of leaders that the youth department can look at. But me, as a child, I was looking at Jean McKinney, Bishop McKinney, Mother Law, and here we are now pouring back into the church because of them. So thanks, friends.
Alright, thank y'all. Y'all keep on watching. Don't forget to keep saying, thank you, Mother Law, for getting the app. You got the app. You got, Mother Law, you got the app.
I got the app. I got it.
Technologically sound.
Well, thank y'all so much. Y'all can hang out as long as you like. No problem. You know, Dr. Carla, the people are loving you out there. They're commenting, like, I called out the Cojic Greeks, Delta Sigma Theta is in the house, you know, and your twin.
Subtly wearing pink and greens, so these deltas will stop.
You know, your twin actually said, AK is in the house right there, so, as well. And Maurice Clark is out there in the house as well. Dr. Cedric Thompson, he said, the noobs, the noobs is in the house.
We're gonna get in trouble. You know the saints ain't ready for these Greeks. We love the Lord. Our Cojic group has grown to about 1,300 people. They have so much fun, just lifelong friendships and talking about the Lord.
Oh, what a blessing. We've got a great endorsement here from the one and only superintendent, Melton Timmons. He's one of the great assets to the trustee board, 100% support for you, Dr. Carla. You know, Dr. Carla, I'm gonna say this, if you're a member of the Cojic Greeks organization, which I'm a member too as well. But if you're a member of the Cojic Greeks organization, and you're watching this broadcast, go to cojicelections.com right now and just claim your $300 gift. Cojicelections.com right now and claim your $300 gift. Now, if you are a member of the group, the Cojic Greeks, what you can do is you can go to your cell phone, download our app. And if you do it within the next three days, I'm gonna bless you with a trip to Las Vegas. How about that? Just download the app and become a subscriber. You gotta become a paid subscriber, become a subscriber, and you can get that trip to Las Vegas. And we'll give away some smart watches as well on our broadcast. So smart watch, that's when everybody get some gifts and enjoy yourself and have a great time. As the Saints and friends are still coming, I have called out, oh, look here, look here, Scott Galbraith is on right now. And Scott just said, NBA playoffs are on. He's on with you right now. So we gonna get right, Scott.
That's simply a rivalry to never, why you wanna say that on my show?
On Carla's show.
But it's early. You know how it is. It's women's convention season, and I serve on several committees with the women's department. And so we're meeting, there's several meetings tonight at six.
Wow.
Thank you for bumping us up early, but we stay, I love everything I do, but we had to come on early in the middle of the game, Scott.
To make it happen. Carla, how have you been to manage in, in a mother of three boys, active boys? I saw them participate in the national presidium with the presiding bishop, and three boys, active mother, an incredible businesswoman, a woman who loves the Lord, serves your church. We'll have you announce your church, your pastor, your bishop and everything, and yet, can I say you do all this on your own? I mean, you just, you just make it happen, huh?
Hey, to God be the glory, three boys and a grandson. My grandson Steve is sixth generation Church of God in Christ. I don't think there's any seven gens yet, but he's a sixth gen, and God just helps us. One thing about me is everything I do in the secular, I do in church as well. So if it's scholarship money, I do both. If it's hospitality, I do both, and so that makes it easy. Plus, I love what I do, and so it's so much easier when you love what you do, you love your church, and I wanna see our church progress. That's the way I was raised, and that's what I'm imparting and giving to the people of God.
Tell us the name of your pastor in the church and jurisdiction you belong to.
My pastor is the Albert Galbraith Jr., North Highlands Community Church of God in Christ. He is in the Northern California First Jurisdiction, the mother jurisdiction in Northern California. When Bishop Mason cut us in half, Northern Cal First and Southern Cal First. And so proud member of my jurisdiction and church.
You know, we're gonna cut right to the chase to the hard questions of, you know, your father is the chairman of the Board of Bishops. Your mother, one of the most, I knew your mother before I knew your dad. Your mother is just Miss Hospitality. Matter of fact, if you go to Google, type in the word hospitality, I believe your mom's picture will probably pop up. She will always give me a cheeseburger when they, when, when the places feel packed out at the women's convention. I said, mother, I didn't get you, say, here, Steve, take this voucher and go over and get you some meat down at the restaurant. Your mother, but Dr. Carla, you're running this race the last time, and your parents endorsed you, they supported you. But now, it's not Bishop Galbraith's daughter, it's Carla, the proven record. Let's talk about that. You're running this on your own voice, not saying I'm not loving your parents or anything, but you know, you're doing this because you've already proven yourself. You've made the point. I saw you at Convocation a couple of years ago, doing the show, doing here, doing the Greeks, go to that group, go to that group, and yet, not miss a beat. And then you went up on the presidium on official day, and, and then you was gone again. I mean, you, how do you manage all that? But you did this on your, and this time you're running for reelection. Let's talk about that.
You know, I love my parents. Who doesn't? And one thing about the church, we honor lineage. We honor our forefathers. We never forget them. And that is a sure foundation, as spoken in the Bible. The saints, though, the saints are intelligent. They understand the concept of lineage, but this is more than a last name. We are looking for people that can help perpetuate our, the success of the church, who can keep the church going with their professionalism. And so that's more than just, I'm so-and-so's daughter, or I'm so-and-so's great-granddaughter. There's nothing wrong with that. But we really ought to bring some intelligence and some knowledge to it. And so I'm gonna mention my parents. I mean, I got their last name, but I also wanna build up the fact that I have three earned degrees. I am a professional educator, millions of dollars in budgets, and what better place to give that professionalism and experience to but to my church? And, you know, you look at grant writing, things like that, on paper, you can't speak in tongues on paper. You can't go to the bank and start, you know, going into a violent shakeout, and Galbraith, Galbraith, Galbraith. No, they gonna wanna see, what are your credentials? What, how, how can we trust you with these funds? And then that's where I can pull out my expertise, plannings, organizational leadership, and my resume.
Now, you are a executive in the educational industry, a principal of a very prestigious school. I won't give out the school right now, but very prestigious school. But at times, the budget that you handle at that one facility has exceeded almost the same amount or even more than the entire budget of the Church of God in Christ. And you have to administer payroll, repairs, programs, supplies. So you administer, it's, it's pretty much like saying, Steve, we're gonna give you a budget of $10 to work with, to kinda help, to help us with a group of other people. But your daily budget is $20 that you gotta do by yourself. So let's talk about your experience in budgeting, dealing with properties and things of that nature that you bring to the trustee board.
Sure. Well, I will say, instead of 10 and $20, I deal with millions of dollars, Steve. I'm not bragging, but millions of dollars. You know, there's more to school than just lunch money. Somebody gotta buy the tetherball, somebody gotta pay the salaries and the benefits. And all contracts that go with it. My largest school was nine, about nine million. We get done with the arts department, the math department, the bussing, the after-school program, the curriculum. We were able to do that, so much so, cuz I love Excel, Microsoft Excel, you know, you put it on a spreadsheet and all that type of stuff. The district office would call and say, Dr. Galbraith, we need the spreadsheet. And I said, the spreadsheet? You mean my spreadsheet that I built? Not the spreadsheet, my spreadsheet. That's what the church taught us also. You gotta be organized, and when someone asks me for a budget code, I have to be able to get right to it, not necessarily on a computer. So my largest school was a charter school, nine million. Currently, I am the interim director. Prayers up that I become the director, but I'm the interim director of adult education, and that's about six million. So again, it's that organizational leadership. No one is an island, but you take your budget, you delineate and differentiate with the other constituents to see what is our greatest need. We have our meetings, and every year, when it's time for that big financial plan, we call it the LCAP. It has different names, Local Controlled Spending. You are able to defend the money. This is what I spent it on, and this justifies it, and you defend it with data. Now, I don't know if the church is ready for that, but if we gave you, Steve, if I gave you, let's say, $50,000, okay, I'm giving you this money. But at the end of the year, I need a full report on what you did with the $50,000, or I'm taking it back. Uh-oh, the saints ain't ready for that. I don't wanna get canceled before I even get started, but with budgets, it's more than giving the money. It's almost like when I used to ask my parents, I need $20, and they would say, for what?
Right, 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 right.
They were holding me accountable for the expenditures that I needed to buy. They were holding me accountable for the expenditures that I needed to buy for the bubble gum or hair weave that I wanted to buy. But same with the church, you have all of this money and you have to be able to interpret it, you have to be able to defend it, and you have to be able to justify it. That's what I do for a living, in addition to home suspensions, field trips and talking to the lunch lady.
Wow. And converting that now, you know, we kept to mention that Zeta Phi Beta is in the house.
Oh, wow. It's what we're doing.
The Zetas have just joined us online and she's going to share it to her page as well. Let's talk about this. What are some of the accomplishments you've done and you're proud of in the last four years being on the trustee board that you can say, I'm proud of that with my team, I'm proud of this. What are some of your accomplishments?
I was placed on two committees. And I'd like to thank Bishop Dwight Walls for seeing the leadership in me as a brand new neophyte trustee. I was placed on the budget committee. What a huge committee to be on my first time out. So I was doing a lot of listening, a lot of observation to see, okay, I see what the spreadsheets are. I do spreadsheets all day. I see where that came from, but I came in listening and learning. I thought I was gonna be able to just be quiet and listen, but then Mother Law and others pushed me out there. Say something, Carla, you see that? Speak up. I was like, okay. So the budget committee was wonderful and being able to represent our church, represent the board in front of the General Assembly in our church has been a wonderful experience, a proud moment. Even small things like taking all the numbers that are shown across the screen and putting some colors on it, put some graphics on it, make it look like a really expensive presentation, you know? That means something. When people are sitting there in Mason Temple or at home, they wanna see a presentation that has a little bit of finesse to it. And so the budget committee has been wonderful under the leadership of the chairperson, missionary Carrie Barnes, and our team, I've learned a lot. The second thing I did, I kind of fell into it, I started working with Bishop Chase, who is the chairman of the logistics committee. Now, our internal logistics committee is almost like what my mom does in hospitality. Make sure we have food, we have a place to meet. If even something as small as having extension cords or, you know, talking with the secretary to get a hotspot. Those are the things that I've done for logistics and you know, we have to eat. Because you know, it's long days and also different department chairs come to our meetings to talk about their budget. So you wanna give them some refreshments or something like that. So while the saints are singing and shouting, we're in meetings. Taking care of the business of the church and so refreshments help. So the budget committee, logistics committee, that's how I got my start. I am looking forward to continuing that work. Vote for me, Dr. G.
Wow, vote for me, Dr. G. We're also gonna let people know your website is out there as well. Give them, give them your website so they can know if they wanna find you, look you up and read some more about your credentials. Give us your website out there as well.
Sure, easy breezy, www.drcarla.galbraith.com. Just D R Carla Galbraith dot com is my website. So many things about me, about my businesses, about my family, there's pictures, there are ways to give. It's all there on my website. And Brother Steve, I wanted to share with you, I put two of my businesses on my website.
Really?
Yes, one of them is the Gap Academy. Gap stands for Galbraith Academic Prep. There was a time that I wanted to open a charter school. I mean, I'm sure I could do a very good job at it. But that vision changed into more of a coaching and mentorship program for other fellow administrators. So you know, being a principal, they teach you things in credential school, but they don't teach you on the spot things, how to be, you know, how to deescalate a confrontation from a mad parent, how to deliver the message that somebody's child is not graduating. And you gotta gracefully say, uh, graduation is next week and your son ain't in it. So ways to coach other administrators, just like I needed coaching. And then likewise, when you have parents that are looking at college for their kids or looking at career, you can call the Gap Academy and we can talk about what that looks like and different options that are contemporary. And then my other business is called et cetera events. You know, you gotta have decorations, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm et cetera events. Again, everything we do in church is what I do in my personal life as well. And you can find all of that on the website.
Let me ask you this, there's members of the trustee board right now, and you're currently on the trustee board. But also we have about twelve other people who are candidates for the trustee board. Now, this election is different because this is one of the first times in history that there are four seats out of, is it four out of thirteen seats?
Four out of fifteen, yes.
Four out of fifteen, four out of fifteen seats over. That's rare. Most times it's no seats out of no seats available for the trustee board. There are four seats available and we, and we do know one reason why Mother Law is retiring, so that seat is available. What makes you different from all the other people running? Like there's other candidates running who would like to get elected on the trustee board. What would you say makes you different?
What makes me different is not only am I the only candidate from California, but I do the job of a trustee already with my line of work. So we have bishops and pastors that are trustees. We had two accountants, but they are now moving on. Mother Law is one of those. And so for me, not being an accountant, but doing accounting as a part of an administrator, administrator, that's what I bring. I'm not the only one that can do accounting, but this is what I do every day of the week. And people don't realize that, you know, being an administrator, a school principal is more than just going to the pumpkin patch and, you know, supervising the prom. We are in there doing paperwork every single day. In the same way we defend the budget in front of the General Assembly, I'm defending the budget in front of the school board. In the same way that we're coming up with a plan to support our church, I'm coming up with a plan to talk with the stakeholders, community leaders, parents and school board. This is what I do for a living. So it's not just something, just put on a pretty dress and act like a trustee. This is natural for me. It's what I do and I wanna give my talents to the church.
You know, what are some of the things that trustees do that people may not know about? Because when we talk about trustee board, they think, well, you get a parking spot, preferences. You get a place to sit, you know, on the platform and you get to walk around with the title. And if you wanna entourage, you can have somebody follow you around with a bag and briefcase. But you move so fast, or I see you maneuver at the conventions. But what are some of the things that trustees do that, that you kind of found out when you came and said, oh, okay? So share that with us.
Sure. Well, we already talked about the budget. The trustee board is responsible, like any trustee board, even in a local church. You have to be able to have a group of people, a second set of eyes that look at your budget. But the trustee board is also in charge of the properties of the church. We look at all of the land and property that is owned by the church and we manage it. So whether it be cleaning or repairs, we are responsible for maintaining those properties of the church. In fact, in court, according to the constitution, trustee board must maintain a superintendent of properties. And that superintendent of properties really goes in with a fine tooth comb, looks at the walls, look at the plaster, looks at the employees. You know, in a job, you might have your bargaining unit. Yeah, you might have your bargaining unit, your union and things that are looking at the employees. Well, the trustees has a superintendent of properties that looks at the working conditions, the pay and just the property as a whole. Then they can put in a bid to have some repair work done. So it's more than just the budget. It is the properties of the church. And we also take a look at our place in the constitution. We're constantly gauging if what we're doing is constitutional so that in front of the General Assembly, we can speak proud and speak with intelligence and know what we're talking, integrity. Very integral. That's what the trustee board does. We have to be able to represent the church. Outside of the general board, we have to be able to represent our church no matter what. That's what we do.
This second round, as a trustee board member, what would you tell the delegates? In a few moments, I'm gonna have you talk to the delegates directly into the camera. But this second round, what are you gonna bring to the board this second round? When you elected, if elected again as a National Board of Trustee member?
This second time around, I'm gonna bring not only my twenty seven years of experience in education, but I'm gonna come with my four years of experience on the trustee board and the things that I have learned. Now, really, coming out of the pandemic, we were the first group that were elected in our first virtual election. So it wasn't quite four years, it's more like three, because that first year we were kind of figuring out the technology and stuff. But for this quadrennial, I'm coming in as an incumbent with a wealth of knowledge and experience now. Now, this is on top of my foundation of my work in the music department, where I sung in the choir and the national praise team for many years. I work in Kojic charities. I'm on the scholarship committee and have been doing that for years. I work in the youth department. I'm a member of Kojic Collegians and a member of Kojic Girls Rock. So I always keep my thumb on the pulse of the youth, which segues right into education. I'm a member of the women's department. I am the chairman of the She Wins Single Girls, Single Women Support Group and of course, the National Hospitality. So I'm putting all these experiences in the church with my profession and I'm bringing all that back to the trustee board. I think I make for a compelling candidate to represent our church.
You know, I'm gonna step off camera for just a moment and allow you to speak to the delegates. I wanna let people know, this is one of a series of interviews with Dr. Galbraith. This is one of a series of interviews with Dr. Galbraith. And before we have you speak to the people, just give us that website again. Maybe your twin could type it in to the chat box or we can actually try to get in the chat box. What's that website again? And you give out your information they wanna give to your campaign.
Trying to see if I can mix and scratch, you know, like California, that website is www.drcarla.galbraith.com. That's D R, Dr. Carla, C A R L A, and my name, Galbraith, G A L B R A I T H. Dr. Carla Galbraith dot com. And on it, you can find so many exciting things on the site, things about me, things about our church. So I hope you enjoy yourself there.
Can people donate to the, the campaign now if they, if they like to?
Absolutely. I'm available on all the portals, your Venmo, your PayPal and your Cash App. And there is, all the QR codes are on the page. Or if it's already on your phone, and I know it is, Venmo, PayPal, Cash App. Any contribution would be much appreciated and God bless you for giving.
I'm gonna ask you to speak to the delegates out there right now and have a conversation. And before we do that, what do you wanna say to the millennials out there?
The millennials, the millennials, they are looking for something different. This is not just business as usual. There is a place and we certainly need the Holy Ghost. We need the presence of miracles, signs and wonders in our life. But this is also about taking care of business. Our church is too old and too knowledgeable to not be just as competitive as everyone else, the other reformations, and we are. And you need people that understand that. With a young face and a young representation, where I am old enough to know the history of the church, but I'm young enough to know where you are and what's going on and what you need for someone a little more contemporary, I bring all those things. My last year's campaign last time was a breath and a bridge, a breath for Galbraith, but also a breath of fresh air to bridge our traditional church to our contemporary church. And I still bring those attributes.
With that being said, what do you wanna say to the seasoned saints? I call them the Mason Temple friends, the ones who've been going to convocation like my mom and dad for the last fifty years. What do you wanna say to the seasoned saints, the ones that says, well, I'm trying, I'm, I'm kind of looking at the young lady? You know, so what word do you wanna say to the seasoned saints up there?
To the seasoned saints, I promise you, I will put on some stockings and a long skirt. I won't wear my Adidas sweatshirt with the matching shell toe Adidas to church. I know how to act, but I have been trained by the best. My grandmother, the late Mother Richardine L. Hunt, taught us well. So we know how to pray. I can outpray any of them. We know how to fast, we know how to get a word in. And when we come up from that shut in, somebody gotta keep the books. So I can do that too. You can trust me.
Dr. Carla, share a word to the delegates out there right now.
Yes, 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 delegates, delegates. I am so happy that you trust me enough to check out our stream yard tonight and to join me on tonight. This election is gonna be a huge election this year. We're coming out of the pandemic, we've lost some loved ones, but now it is time to continue the work that Bishop Mason prophesied for our church. I come poised and ready, fully educated, full of passion and professionalism to represent you, represent our church to the best of our ability. You can trust me. I have a stellar track record and I am ready with all confidence to represent you on the trustee board with honesty, integrity and new and improved ideas to support our church. So vote for me, Dr. G for trustee.
Dr. Carla, thank you so very much. We appreciate you. For those people watching our broadcast, you can watch the replay on tonight.
Yes.
The Church Family Channel.
Hey, Mr. Steve, I should say, brother Steve, Dr. Steve, you know, tonight was ladies night. I just cooked, kicked off the first of the lady interviews, right?
You sure you were the first one? And you're the first at doing a lot of great things and the people, the people just love you out there. They're commenting, they, they love what you're saying, they support you. And you are actually right, one of the supervisors, Jeanette King is out there watching the broadcast right now. Thank God for her and your comments and the people are there, the numbers are growing higher. If you wanna say something to Dr. Carla before we start, we got about three minutes left on the air. Okay, Erica Laurie out there, I wanna say, she see you rocking that pink and green out there.
You're gonna get in trouble. They gonna mess with us.
They gonna mess with the Kojic Greeks out there tonight. Are watching. If you wanna say you support her, you love her, you care about her. But Superintendent Milton Timmons, again, Dr. Carla is a great asset to the trustee board and has one hundred percent support and we thank you so, so very much. Dr. Carla, you're making things happen. You know, you're right. You've kicked off the ladies. For the trustee board, you are the first one who kicked it off and, and we're just so proud of you. What closing words you wanna say to the Saints and Friends out there watching our broadcast on tonight?
Hey, God bless all of you. And of course, I'm gonna put on my teacher's hat. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week and Nurses Appreciation Week. So for the educators out there, vote for Dr. G for trustee, but have a good one this week. And let's go. We got campaigning for the next five and a half, six months. It's gonna be busy, but we're gonna keep God first, we're gonna keep it healthy and we're gonna have a great time.
And we are looking forward to seeing you at the International Women's Kids Convention for the Church of God in Christ. And maybe I can convince your mom to give me a cheeseburger this year. Maybe I can convince her.
She loves you, Steve. You know, she has secrets in that bag.
And you, that bag, you're right. Your mother be carrying that bag. Oh, my mother is loving you out there tonight. My mother, Mother Ora Harris out there praying for you, lifting you up. So my mom just gave you a very good word out there. My mother is a praying warrior for real, prayer warrior for real. I mean, she, she, I tell this almost on every show, my mother does not allow me to use the word Kojic.
Okay.
You can't say Kojic. My mother said, I'm not Kojic. You are, but I'm Church of God in Christ.
Right.
Bishop Mason personally laid hands on me when I was a teen, so she Church of God in Christ. My mom can pray probably three days straight. I, you know, just, you know, just, she just started praying. I was like, okay, I just call and say hi, but you know, she get a prayer and she, mothers know, mothers know when something going on. They, they know.
They know.
Ain't no fool no mama. So Erica Laurie, she said, yes, don't forget the teachers out there, the saints that watch you. Dr. Carla, we appreciate everything and let people know that you're gonna see her again. You're gonna watch this interview replay on Facebook or in the app, the Church Family Channel. You can watch this later on and share it, share it, share it. Let's vote for Dr. G, a vote for Dr. G.
Thanks, Brother Steve, for the opportunity.
Dr. Carla, you're the best. Hang out with me, Dr. Carla. Just one second. From Hollywood, California, you're watching Brother Steve TV and you're watching Dr. Carla Galbraith, candidate for reelection to National Board of Trustees. We got some more interviews coming up tonight, so stay with us. Dr. Carla, we'll be right back. candidate for reelection to National Board of Trustee. We got some more interviews coming up tonight, so stay with us, Dr. Carla, we'll be right back.